I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And speaking of our friend John, we thought we'd just take a quick pause, moment of silence, to remember and honor our friends in Oregon. So. Thank you. And on December 7th, it's kind of a fitting day. I apologize for my emotions. You're just gonna have to witness some tears out of your eyes. I did wanna say that if anyone wants to say anything about John at this time, or think about it for our next meeting on Monday, we're gonna do the same thing. So I'm gonna let anybody at the table share anything they would like. So if anybody has anything to say tonight. So be prepared for Monday if you'd like. And I'll have tissues at my desk. Thank you, everyone. You will be missed. Okay, and let's move on to our long-range facility planning update.
Great.
Can I just let you take it away, Richard?
Yeah, I think, unless you have some opening comments, but.
No.
Okay, I'm gonna do one thing.
Yeah.
Well, first and foremost, it's always good to get the opportunity, even the board, to give you an update on this, what we've been doing.
And Richard, we have two new board members since you have last
Okay.
presented to us, so Andy Bell and Mark Brendan. They joined us in July.
Very good.
This might be the first time you're engaging with that.
Okay. So I have some personal connection to the school district because I've had the great opportunity for school district for a number of years, not from the community. But I've done everything from soul fried pies to actually help move in some furniture, so. I'm always thrilled to come back and have the opportunity to meet with the school district and work with your community. So my initial comment is really the foundation for what I would like to do. Right, is this is what the facilities committee has been doing. And I'm gonna give you an overview. I have brought this presentation specifically for you that is an overview. I have every single one of the individual presentations that we made with the long-range facility planning committee. It's good that Grant is here. He can supplement his participation and also some of the findings. So I did create an agenda. Just doing introductions, then I'm gonna go through the TAP grant process, which is the basis of this assessment and long-range facility plan. And then I'm gonna go into a summary of what the committee went through and kind of some step-by-steps process pieces and also some findings. A little bit of this kind of briefing you on how the TAP grants work. And then the second part is obviously, this is the work that they did. And then we have the last thing, which is our next steps. Then it would be great to give some feedback to the committee such that they can make any adjustments and actually get a concerted effort because ultimately it's the board's decision to accept or reject the facility plan. That doesn't necessarily mean it is any type of capital improvement point. Ordinarily, it is linked, but it's not literal. So before I digress too much, any questions about what we're gonna try to do tonight? Some of these are directly from the Oregon Department of Education. So the technical assistance program grant is, was created. It's been in development for over 12 years. At the state level, the way back to Kitzhauer's administration, they formed this committee to find out how state of Oregon could or should fund capital improvements for schools because of all the surrounding states do. Oregon does not up until, well, I guess five, six years ago. So the first step is to figure out, okay, what's the condition of all the schools? Anecdotally, the legislature has been asked many times to provide funding for schools. The legislature says, great, we love it. How much do you need? Nobody can tell them. So with that kind of gap, it's like, well, until you tell us how can we fund improvements? And so they developed the technical assistance program, which is a grant available every single school district in the state of Oregon to do two things. One is to assess all their schools. And the other is to create a long-range facility plan, LRFP. The first part is scripted by the state and described exactly what you look at. And it is to do an assessment. Hey, Angela, this is my colleague Angela Crooks. She's actually, she's here, she did some assessments. So the mission of the TAP grants, as it's written right here, is by great schools first. Warm, safe, dry. Some of the goals is of the process was to provide qualified individuals that can follow the ODE guidelines for assessing buildings. And there's training involved. So our team has three assessors. I have one of the certified assessors by the state. And the idea is that all assessors have the same baseline information. Then you get consistent information across the state. To that, it leads to the second part, which is to provide uniform accurate data that informs the ODE of the stakeholders of the condition of our schools across the state. So the first thing I want to show is they have a spreadsheet that is blurry up here, but it is every single system in a school that exists, starting from the outside of the exterior walls to interior elements, to the building systems, mechanical electrical plumbing. So back in May of 2021, we reported to the board, got started doing the assessment back on 12/31 of last year. We actually reported that what we were gonna do, that it may, we actually got the assessment in. And that led to doing the long-range facility planning. So this is an illustration that is, like, look quickly at this one. That's a big spreadsheet. There's five pages. So finally, I'm gonna stand up. So the way it works is, this happens to be the exterior enclosure system. So that's trade name for exterior walls, exterior windows, exterior doors, everything that they use to close the space. So what the ODE spreadsheet says, okay, go look at the exterior of the building. First, you gotta figure out what's it made of. It can be, they only give us six options, concrete, form, tilted. It's usually a gym, basingary, framed with wood siding, framed with metal siding, framed with stucco, framed with basingary veneer. This school was framed with basingary veneer and sub-siding. So they give you those options and you choose. Sorry, I forgot what you're going to say. Let me go back. That's the old gym. There we go. So as you know, the old gym is 100% framed with wood siding. So the entire enclosure is wood siding, and that is building type. That's why we put 100%. If it was this St. Mary's Public School, then it would be framed with basingary veneer and a thick metal siding. So it breaks down what percentage of the building. Next, there's a level of action. You assess it. Is it in need of a minor repair, medium repair, major, or replace? Each one of these levels has a note in it that you, you know, with an Excel spreadsheet, you drag over the note. It tells you what defines a minor, medium, major, or replacement. So it gives you guidelines as what that really means. So in this, we chose modern, based on the description. It's in pretty good shape. It's got some deterioration, but not so much that needs to be replaced. So you check that box. Next, you go, well, what percentage of that system, exterior closure, needs to be repaired? It could be that you got some really severe deterioration in one spot. But in this case, we're saying the whole thing is in moderate condition. So 100% of the exterior. This is the cost generated from the ODE spreadsheet. Oregon Department of Education contracts on an annual basis with a cost estimating company that updates this entire spreadsheet. So based on what percentage, what's the condition, what percentage that needs to be repaired, you get a cost. Before you start in the spreadsheet, log in and square footage of that. Square footage is building, what percentage next year, I'll go. This is the cost to do the work. So this is the results of all of your buildings. And it creates a facility condition index. And the index is pretty simple. What percentage of the replacement cost compared to repair costs? What percentage repairs are the cost to repair compared to what it'd be to replace the building? The replacement budgets are given to us by ODE. Again, it's a formula of what kind of building is it, times square footage of that building. That's the cost. When you compare it to the repair costs, it's a percentage. Your district office is in great shape. It's really new, doesn't really need any repairs. So it has an FCI as zero. That's the one or not. It probably should be like, yeah, that's, no, that's good. As you get a higher percentage of repair to replace, then obviously you need consider those as your most needy buildings. The other thing about ODE is you have to do every single building individually. The first part, storage one, storage two, concessions, grandstand, batting cage. They're, each building has its own assessor. So the reason I plugged this in is this is the summary. And in a glance, you can say, okay, well, look, that D's at 20%, 10%, 8%, 12%. Everything else is in pretty good shape. For their design use, these are not quantitative, or they're not qualitative in what they are. It's just what is broke. I am gonna show you how they produce these budgets. As I said, this number is just the construction cost. So you're talking about something right now that will be fixed somewhere out in the future. There's fees associated with actually getting that work done. It's kind of like my house. The house is one price, but you have all these other fees that get attached to it, survey, inspection, that actually the cost increases. I'm gonna show you exactly how ODE instructs us to do that calculation. But I'm gonna save that to the end where you can see the numbers of all of these indications. I can go there now. If you'd like to see how it's done, we can always do it again. Would you like to see their development costs associated with it? So this is where we start. This is the assessment piece. All we've done is assessed all of your schools based on the Oregon Department of Education's timing. This is the information we shared with the committees as a starting point. All right. Questions?
So we do, back to the previous slide. With your FCI there, what is the context of that? So like, what percentage is something considered good, fair, poor, very poor, like beyond really occupancy? We need to be looking at a whole building?
Great question. Oregon Department of Education doesn't give us one. And let me tell you what I do. This system was set up by NACUBA, which is Association of Higher Education. They actually use this as a way that you could maintain a college campus or a hospital system, or anybody who has a lot of facilities. They say that if you have, if you're in the 20%, then you need to really get working on improving your build, repairing your, repair is the good. Repair the building is the key phrase. The replacement comes at a different, I'll give you a different metric for that. So anything over 20%, you really need to get, have to focus on this. I can tell you that across the state of Oregon, we do these assessments. Your numbers are pretty low. You have good facilities overall. Better than most. We see some schools, we just are doing work with the brand, they've got some in the 65% range. So the repairs are 65% of replacement. State of Washington used to give us a metric for replacement in new, in lose, what they call it. And it was closer to like 70%, 65, 70%. They said, if you get to that point, then you need to really seriously consider just replacing the whole thing. So does that give you some?
Well, I'm just kind of thinking like a visual, right? A visual for people who aren't in the architectural world or the construction world. Kind of give us kind of a timeline, like, okay, you're in really good shape here. And that visual for, not only for us, but for our community, right? To say, here's where our buildings are at. That visual of saying, you know, you're kind of on this index and you're slightly, because I was kind of like trying to understand the FCI and kind of looking, what is this exactly mean? And I find I've come a couple of different graphics in there that says, you know, zero to five, you're really good, an FCI. Right? But then once you get to the above 10, it talks about you're kind of starting to hit that poor category. And so I think if we were to present something to the community saying, okay, here's how we're at to kind of protect our investment, because our schools are our investment, I think it might be a better understanding where it's that somebody coming up, oh, 20%, like, we're looking, you know, really good. Or that's a percent, a percentage where you're kind of like, well, you really wanna kind of start fixing some things now to protect that investment where later on, you know, things can kind of, potentially be a snowball, right?
So the next level, the caveat is, this is a snapshot of, right?
Right.
It's not, it's not a life cycle analysis, which says, okay, you've got these things that are expiring in the next seven years that you ought to look at now. It doesn't really have that, but what it does say is these are the things that you need to address right now. Because they're broken. So the 20%, NACUBA says that you need to put, that NACUBA suggests that at 20%, you need to do a capital campaign to fix those items. This doesn't talk about, so the long-range facility plan does get into other elements or softer elements, the qualitative elements of a school. Like the gym. It's an old building. There's not that much, you know, it's 10%.
The gym, oh, the old gym, yeah.
The old gym.
Right, but the old gym doesn't have your really expensive HVAC or your plumbing, right? So of course the FCI on that would be, whoa.
Absolutely.
Right, right.
So that, it is, it is purely quantitative, is what you have right now. So the roof is a good element that we need to be addressing. You need to protect the roof. But the mechanical system, it's not addressing the fact that you want to upgrade your mechanical system to a new system. No, it's just repair what you have right there. So a life cycle cost analysis is another level. It's another level of assessment that can tell you of these systems that are identified, which ones are gonna fail first, or should you direct your cost? I can only give you, again, the anecdote piece of process state. We see them in 60, 65%. These are very, these are the lowest we've seen that you have put. I can also take that as like, here's, you gotta look at what are causing these ones to go up into that 20% range? And that analysis, when Grant was part of the conversation, did actually end up in the planning process.
And Andy, I like what you're saying, though. When we do finalize our, if we get to the point of going out for magic, moving ahead, having color coded, like, I would put St. Mary's in red. And then maybe anything between 11 and 19, maybe that's orange. And then I think below 10 would be green. I don't know. I'm just saying, like, visuals are really good.
Yeah, I would admit that makes sense. You're right there with you, St. Mary's. 20 looks good right there, but it's becoming a little concerning.
It's, that's, yeah.
So another piece I'm gonna, right, I'm sure you're saying, while this is all well and good for ODE, we have to submit eventually for a grant or the bond. The rest of us in the room here, good and grant, have to justify a bond or a grant to our own community. And what's not really well laid out in any of this, except this one I just found here from the original assessment slideshow, is describing what is wrong with each building and the different components of what you're inspecting. And then why? You know, why are we replacing all the lighting LEDs? Well, that's obvious, but is there a legitimate reason if we're only gonna be working on the concession stand? That's the point that needs, you know, and then St. Mary's, for example, here. There is a big chunk of money for replacing all the sewer water lines. Makes sense, well, with money, we know it happens, but is there an explanation as to why? When you went, we're inspecting it, is there notes that were created that say, this is what we found? This is why it has to be done? The extent of the notes are in the spreadsheet, where?
Yeah.
We don't have a spreadsheet. We just have the slides.
Okay, fair enough.
Fair enough, but.
Okay.
The spreadsheet was one of the other attachments that wasn't that you could use.
No, they're just all PDFs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, and that's just, as we go through this, you know, I understand that what we're talking about here, but in the end, we all have to go to back for you guys, for ourselves.
Yeah.
Right?
For you guys.
Well, no, but we're taking your information and understanding it, having to go have discussions with community members and saying, this is why we have to do this, and have concrete reasons and evidence. So they can see that bump in their text. Right? So, and right now, as a new board member, and I'm gonna pull that card right now. I don't see that. I see what you're doing for ODE, and it makes perfect sense, right? And so we have to submit, it's in their format, in their notes, makes sense. The FCI's are understandable, how they get there. But how did you get there when you did the assessment? And that's, I think that's the piece that's gonna spreadsheet someone that maybe Andre and I haven't seen yet.
So it is, it is a partnership. Grant's seen every single one of these. Doesn't have to agree with them, but Grant has looked at every single one of these spreadsheets. And he was with us on some of those assessments. So I would suggest we need to create a partnership, which is, you have questions. Okay, well, this is what we saw. The LED isn't good. It's an option.
Yeah.
By current school standards, you should have LED. Can you afford that? There's so many other questions that we can't answer. We can only put them all.
And I guess, you know, that was an example, and I'm more focused on things that, of course, we need to repair or replace that are immediate type needs, right? Just finding out, so that when we go to the community, when we're cornered down at the hardware store, we have concrete information of, you know, this is why it's gonna cost $3 million to upgrade St. Mary's. And not just because we have to replace it, but here's why we have to replace it. You know, those kinds of things as we go forward to, so we can educate ourselves and.
So, and I agree. I totally agree. What I would suggest is, it's kind of, it's like peeling back the onion. Once you see the bigger picture, you can't, typically, the reviewers do take the information and look through all the fine print. But we're helping, and there is a, I believe. Where's, I had a chart that shows you what percentage. Let's just get to that. All right, wow, wait, let me see if it's useful.
That's fair.
So there is a chart, but it's not going to give you the detail that you want. It does show that this percentage of the school, of the improvements are in the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems.
And that's all in some of the information here, right?
Yeah, right.
So, but that doesn't tell us, because it's the ODE spreadsheet, is the why. And that's in your notes somewhere in another spreadsheet, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, but the spreadsheet is the total sum of the report. There is a comment. What I would say is if you look at this, that answers some of your questions. Because if you put your cursor over this, it will explain what is a level of action that is medium, minor. And you see some of these are blacked out. First, no concrete tilted, you can't have a minor repair.
Right.
You can't have a replace. So it is, even then, it's still bracketed. It's not a detailed explanation.
So I guess what I'm looking for, maybe again, is to, when you did your original walkthroughs and assessment, what did you see that had you fill that out as a moderate? Right? What did you observe during your walkthrough that?
Like, we have that. We do have that. We don't have it in like a spreadsheet form. We have it in a PDF form. So if we were to like go over it, it doesn't say.
Absolutely not. So we can make all of the spreadsheets available to you.
That, not, sure. And I guess that's just a question.
Good.
You know, trying to understand, because clearly you put a lot of work into it. That's not the question. It's just having the understanding of what went into that. So we can all be on the same page.
We're happy. We want to provide you what we have that helps answer that question.
Right.
I apologize for not just sending all the spreadsheets.
That's okay. I mean, I just, as long as it exists somewhere and we can have access to it, I guess that's what I look for.
So I think to respond immediately to, what was to give you all the spreadsheet, you don't have to have a copy of it. We will provide you, ODE does take them eventually, but we will share those with you tomorrow. And one thing. Yeah, that's what. There's a spreadsheet for each one of us.
Right, yes.
So let's send you this one.
I need something.
And everything. Yeah, we'll send them all to, just easy enough.
And really, what I guess, me personally, I'm looking for, again, you know, you took the time and the effort to do the original assessment. What did you observe to get to, to get to this?
It is the sum of the parts. We walk around, we do this one at a time.
Right.
Okay, exterior of the building. Walk around, okay, this is what we evaluated. What percentage of the whole total building, we decide it's moderate. That's, then we move on to the next piece. The LED lights is a good one, and I'm not picking on it at all. I rank it.
Neither was I. I was just.
It's a good one, because that is elective. You don't have to change all your lights to LED. It's elective. You don't have to change all your lights to, to LED, it's elective. But it is a recommendation, we, we are observing, we are doing observation, and actually, we have electrical engineer does it. That's what we put in, if we were starting over designing a building, we would have LED light. So put it in there, it is up to the discretion of the school district, whether that's an important, a fellow district, invest your time, effort and money into it. So I like that, ones that are a little bit more.
And I guess my example would be like, so, I'm just gonna go out there. At the middle school, there was observation of part of the roof needed moderate repair. What did you observe that said, right there, that's gonna need some repair? Is there a notice that said, build pod three, north roof, screws come out of it?
There are those, those kinds of things, you know? There are photographs, that are, there are, again, there's summary photographs, this is what we saw.
Right.
Then it's based on the square footage, that's why these percentages.
It's based on their, their, their formula.
This is for, you kind of understand the concept, and we're having to make judgment calls, you're right. How much is this roof, like, in the roof case, great, always a good. Hundred percent of that roof is metal standing seam that will. So what percentage of this roof has this, these conditions that need to be repaired? So we estimate, based on the square footage, that we see twenty percent, and it might be that it's deglaminating, it's leaking, any number of things that you just described. Most of the time, it's, it's leaking, and if you look at, why is, well, probably need to do some refleishing, or maybe it doesn't have a ridge vent on it. So there is some discretion on our part as to, how do you fix it? But we depend a lot on Grant for information, we take it from there. I don't, we're not putting too much of him by the way, he wasn't with us the whole time, we didn't walk around all the time.
But it's also just having the understanding of how you went from the assessment to those observations to this. That's, I think Andre and I.
Yeah.
Were new, so we weren't here in.
That's fine.
May, you guys, the original walkthrough, or March, so.
So.
Trying to catch up.
So, and it's great, there are, the way the state did this, as I said, to standardize it across the state. Back in the old days, you used to say, we'd like to analyze this building. Civil engineer would give you fee, mechanical fee, electrical fee, architect fee. They'd spend, you know, a day just combing over this, this building. Then they would give you a twenty-page report. And that was what you got announced, then you had to figure out what you were doing. State doesn't want that, what they want is a consistent evaluation of the conditions across, so it is streamlined, you're right.
And it makes sense, sense from like the ODE end of things, wanting you to just show me the same thing over and over, in a consistent manner. Which brings about a completely unrelated question. Does the state ever come back and re-pod it, your, any district's work for consistency of what they were given?
So the funding is, again, they're trying to get to where they could fund capital proof, it's, it's very similar. Actually, the state of Washington has a similar system of assessments, but it, it's, it's not as detailed, it's even less. It's a lot more guest events, but not criticizing the system on contract, this is great that we have any funding available at the state. Part of the reason that I believe the founding of the school district is right here today is because you kind of got cheated. You passed the bond just before the funding became available. It would have been great to have had that money eight years ago. That cheating stuff, that's a little unfair. But, so you didn't get the benefit of that funding, it would have been nice to add that to it. They've tweaked the system, now four million bucks is what, four million dollars is, is a lot of money, but that's the match. So that's why they just, they want to get as much money into hands of school districts as needed. And the way to do it is to answer that question to legislature, how much do you need? Here's a school, okay, I'm beating the dead horse.
No, no, you're fine.
Thanks. But we will provide you this, the detail, we'd be happy to, to address any of your questions or concerns. Did you have any questions or concerns, or can you add or, to this discussion, or what you saw, what you kind of saw, you really didn't do the assessment with us? But we did kick it off, and you did give some tours.
Yeah.
Thank, I got you, I got you. I didn't, I'm not putting you on the spot, I didn't have the opportunity to speak up. Okay, so. This is, like I said, compared to the schools there six, that we've done recently. If you, and by the way, your, your neighbors to the south were just finishing up their long-range facility plan. And their buildings are not in good shape. Okay. So the assessment piece is one grant. The long-range facility plan is the next grant, and they say thou shall provide these things. If you want them, if you want to qualify for an awesome grant, thou shall give us this, 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 this. It is been around for twenty years, it was actually only applied to school districts over two thousand students. Now they apply to all school district, it's a framework. So some of these don't really make a whole lot of sense. But the first one's collaboration with local, you can see where this would be really important. If you were in Beaverton, Hillsborough, where you're drilling, and you need to buy to create more schools. So you gotta work with local government, local developers, to find sites for these new schools. That's primarily what they're looking for, if you look at the, the ORS, it states, that's really what you wanted, is find out local sites. We believe it's important for the school district to communicate with other, or other governing agencies that can actually pass bonds. So you're all on the same page, you're not building two swimming pools, these are not true, but they're. What about parks and rec, is there a collaboration there? So thou shalt at least touch base with other jurisdictional agencies. Next one up is population projections, as it relates to enrollment. Do you have a growing need for space for your kids? Do you have unhoused students, do you have your kids in accordance? So that's why it's important to go ahead and look at your, at your population and enrollment. Community involvement is the long-range facility plan. Invite your community to participate, we ask, be there four meetings, maybe five. We do it every month, same time, we have an agenda, we, we walk them through a process. The next one is historical building information. You know, state works, the state historical preservation office doesn't have the staffing or the personnel to actually go out and assess every single historic building in the state of Oregon. They used to, they don't anymore. So they put it on the school districts to report any historical buildings that you have in your, on your campuses. A historical building by state description by SHIP-O, state historical preservation office, anything over fifty years old. I mean, state has a lot of historical gifts. But SHIP-O is not keen on saving every building to know that they exist, and they want it documented such that if you choose to raise a building, that they have a record. That's what the historic preservation. So by these statutes, we're asked to, I'm, I'm getting off topic here, I'm, I'm gonna shorten these up. Then the last one, education, national standards, which are in evolution, that is more of the qualitative. I'll show you how that works, and then ten-year proposed plan, they've actually changed, they just want to have a plan. Doesn't have to be any duration, ten years actually is not that very long, it's almost been ten years since you.
I was gonna say, it's about ten years, that's a lot, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a, I have a question on that, oh, sorry, for your, for your FCI, it's a snapshot of where we're at now. But what about, you know, that, that ten-year study period of, you know, the two minute max, if you don't fix it now, you know, here's where you're gonna be at, you know, this year, we see you kind of dumping more money on this year, and then you be good for a couple of years, you're gonna have to dump a little bit more money into that, when it says, you know, the ten-year proposed plan. Do we have the, the ten-year study of the FCI?
No. That's what this planning process does, what, with the knowledge you have here, what do you want to do over the next, what do you hope to do over the next ten years?
So we're not given a report of, hey, here's, here's this right now, if you don't fix it, you know, and, and we foresee in five years, you dumping a bunch of money at it.
So that would be a life cycle cost.
Okay.
What we have identified are those things that need to be fixed right now, it's a snapshot in time, right now. It's. Okay, so the planning process, this is us, we say, thank you committee, thank, thank you for school board for giving us a committee. We'd like to know what your goals are for this process, so that A, we do the right thing, and then B, you have something against which you can measure your mission. If you're true to it, then, or you have to make a decision, you can always go back and look at your mission and values. So. These are, so you've read them, is there anything that really kind of stood out to you, is why is that, do they make sense? Okay.
Can I just ask, Richard, who established these objectives?
Fair enough. So we asked, we don't always get answers. So what we did is we took that last meeting of brainstorm, and of the, of the, we put in a meeting, a section at the meeting, end of meetings, flaws, wonders, or what did we learn? And essentially, we gave every person the opportunity to download what they learned, or what they think's important. Out, out of those notes, we wrote these based on those notes and said, are these okay? And we got confirmation that they were okay. They captured all of their thoughts about after the first meeting, when we introduced, first meeting, you really just introduced the process of the assessment. It was, I, I remember this one in particular. Integrated student success program, that's not, that's, that's pretty, pretty distinct, it's not a big idea, but it didn't matter what part. It's not our vision and goals, that was what one of the committee members said, and we put it in there, and I said, that's it. I, I would make some reflections, you know, the retention of current students is, is not a new element, but I know that the school district is constantly looking for ways to celebrate how really good your school district is, and to attract more students here, to have the opportunity to be a small school district that really cares about, that is community-based. Safety and security, I'm going backwards, that's, unfortunately, it's a constant issue. But this was one that, you know, they, they, the committee valued community events through sport. And the resources available, they think it will attract enrollment. And I did go back, it could help us. Communicates and engages community, we would love for our long-range facility plans, big meetings, everybody coming in and giving us information. It just doesn't work till there's something on the table, people. So the next step is to take this information, if indeed it is a proposed plan, say, hey, this is what we're thinking about, and we'd love to have your feedback. If you get ten people to it, that's great, if you say you're gonna close the schools, you get a hundred.
I, I can just say, I'm glad student success is in there somewhere.
Yeah. We, we really encourage, this is the first thing we talk about at every meeting. Okay, this is the more nitty-gritty. Population is flat. In the formal presentation, the full presentation, we went through several different charts. Your ingress versus your egress, but the bottom line is, it's pretty flat. The growth rate is projected to decline six tenths of a percent. To close to zero between twenty twenty and twenty forty-five, the population is projected to remain stable without major changes. The takeaway, in our opinion, is your student enrollment is pretty stable right now, it's gonna be that way, outside of everything we've experienced the last two.
Another pandemic.
Another pandemic. So this one, this says that, okay, your, your current, if you have enough space for your students right now, you really don't have a need to expand.
Richard, where does all that data come from?
So this is, I get it from many different, the, okay, the Center for Population Research, Department of State. Great, I'm glad you asked for that. Because years ago, you used to have to pay them to give your, your county. Now, they, they smartened up, and now it's a rotate, they do areas of the state on a rotating basis such that everybody's getting an update. I believe every six years. It's good data. We also use other data, like you might do a housing state, it might be a one-off that we include. The historical building, this is the SHIP-O forum, what they really want are information about the schools and photographs. The old gym is eighty-two years old. Kennedy High School, nineteen fifty-nine, and then even middle school has now corrupted the historic. The addition on the high school changed its character from the mid-century modern. So they are, they aren't too concerned about that, they're not concerned about middle school. The old gym, they'd like to have some really good pictures of what you have right now. This doesn't mean it has to be certified as a historic place, doesn't limit anything you can do with it. They just want a record. There are some grant funds available, but they're not a lot. We're working with Union School District, who just got a grant for partial brick restoration on their main building. About twenty thousand dollars, so it's not a whole lot, but if you've got a really historic building like they do, it goes, it's great to, to capture that, and the way you do it is to submit. Any question? Next up is, again, I have more charts. We did an enrollment calculation, a more detailed one, with the teachers, and actually identifying what activities are each one of these classrooms. The blue is your, your kind of your free kindergarten, or your, your K-two, I believe, your, your, what I call primary. Your, the tan is intermediate. Current enrollment is two ninety. Calculated capacity just using these rooms, three hundred and thirty. Your special needs suite is awesome, it's three classrooms. So that is, Mark, back to your question, OD only cares about the capacity, they don't care about the fact that which rooms are undersized. You've got a great music program at the elementary school, but it's undersized. So we do capture that in the educational adequacy, but all I want to know is, are these schools big enough? All I think you want to know is, yes, we do have the space you need to provide contemporary teaching. Next one is the middle school. There's, again, the educational adequacy, so they actually gave us a lot more information than just the basic analysis of where's, where are classrooms. Sorry about the orientation, but, you know, your main entrance is here. And this is, help me with these numbers, top one, two, three percent, four. This one, these are one and two, right?
Yeah.
Okay, rest of it, we can catch up, but this is kind of your sixth grade. This is really kind of a locker bay. It's still counted in the mix as a classroom. But it's, that's what's unique, again, about your middle schools, you do have sixth graders, have a semi-subcontained setup. And you have a locker bay for your older kids up here. And you have a locker bay for your older kids up here because there's not enough space. So they kind of have a whole, your seventh and eighth graders use the rest of these buildings. This build, this classroom in the middle of pod two is, is kind of a flex space. It actually offers, you can offer various CTE programs, so you can introduce that program in that middle school. But it's not a assigned space on a regular basis. So these are the classrooms that we counted. And it comes out, and also we set the, the number of students per classroom at 25 based on, this is the dialogue with the teachers and administrators. So you're pretty close at the middle school. 175, that's just bodies. It's not a qualitative assessment. It's just numbers. You know, your cafeteria, it used to be this big. You're probably familiar with the cafeteria. They needed a place to teach health, so they just chopped off一部分. So the cafeteria is undersized because you took some of the space from instructional space. I didn't even count these in the capacity of your, your specialty programs like band and the PR account. It's just your, your home rooms, if you will. So this number is pretty close, but I, we understood their point that, you know, cafeteria is not really big enough. That was discussed, the health is pretty small. So these are, these are assessments that give you information that you can make judgment for your school. The high school. Again, we just counted all those spaces. At high school, we do count all the band music spaces. But we also divided by a percentage of utilization of 83, 84% for six periods out of seven period data, the only times that those spaces are used. So there's kind of a an equalizer in all the spaces used, but only six periods. These classrooms, the ones we counted, the two over here, the band and music, you know, which gets the band, et cetera. CTE, actually, your CT space, your great CTE space was picked up at the last part. Because you moved your weight room underneath the gymnasium. That was all cafeteria. And nobody go down there because of the bouncing of the balls. So, and I, we didn't drill down the spaces below the media center because those are specialty programs and they actually lease it out to.
We did.
So you can see, my point is we're being kind of conservative. This says of 22 sixth classroom, 161 compared to a capacity, capacity to 242, plenty of space in high school. So there's not a real need for additional space. There was a perceived need in the committee, which we dispelled with this. Not intentional. We went into, okay, here's, so.
Rachel, very closer to 190 at the high school?
To be honest with you, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. I thought we were running around.
From my major.
Okay, so looking at the last three buildings, so technically, 81 for our capacity at the high school, which I think is probably closer to 51. We've got eight students for the middle school. Right? And then we got additional capacity, right? According to these numbers. And about 40 according to these numbers. And then based on the, you know, the population projections for Marion County. Was Man Angel specifically looked at? Because I know we have about 100 new homes going in. And so I'm assuming there are going to be families that are going to be coming in. You know, there's 62, three homes behind, right there between Markham and Church. I'm on the west side of town. And then there's about 40 more homes up in the northwest part of town. Were those additional homes?
So the, this is, the data is based on what Portland can get from the producers. You can have an individual enrollment projection done.
Okay, but we, you just, for this report, you just go up county and not the city?
Yes, okay. Yep.
And it was a bit of discussion though about it. I don't, I don't want you to feel that it was completely.
Oh, no, no, yeah.
And, and what's interesting about that question is we did assume that when the development around Edinburgh Park went in, that we would have increased enrollment. Our enrollment has not gone up for it's never gone up.
It's gone down.
Yeah. And, and that's really, it's just fascinating to me that we, we think that building family-friendly neighborhoods and whatnot is going to trigger increased enrollment. And it may this time. Just hasn't proven to be, to be the case, historically speaking. But yeah, it's interesting.
As of November, it was 100.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Great. I was curious too.
Yeah, 190.
So there, to your point, there is additional capacity.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's less kids that go here than like here 20, 25 years ago when I, when I was in school and we had plenty of capacity back then.
Thank you. And I don't agree.
Not to be dicky, but even at, you know, the Man Angel Middle School, you have like one of these classrooms, it's actually the resource room labeled as a classroom. And I mean, I don't know what that would change, but so.
Based on the computer lab, which is probably pretty much extinct. That they could.
At the middle school?
Yeah.
They haven't used, well, stories. Once, once COVID is gone, I'm sure they will use it. Well, maybe they won't.
Like a research.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think.
Flexibility.
Yeah. Yeah, there we go.
Expanded capacity is not a priority. Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need to worry about.
Yeah.
And that's a good place to be.
It is.
I mean, we want, we want bigger enrollment.
Yes.
So the next one is educational adequacy. We see this as the qualitative. The state didn't give us a lot of criteria on this, so he created this spreadsheet. What you're seeing up here are the roll up of about five, five to six other metrics in that category. Then roll up into an average score. So easiest one is like core capacity. We address classrooms, restrooms, cafeteria space, district office, those pieces that every school has to have. On capacity, special programs, that's where we'll be. By the way, there, we've got special needs, special education in that first category. Then we get into band, music, career tech ed program. So we roll them all up to create an average score. Now, the way the scoring system goes is it's there aren't that many variations of that. It's either is or isn't. So we can't do a zero, one. So we came middle ground, gave the teachers, because, well, we use a big part, we ask a cadre of teachers to score this. This is an hour score. So the teachers, we did it by zoom. And two is it's adequate. One is it's marginally adequate. And zero is it's not adequate, needs to be addressed. Everybody gets, it's really a great process because they start out very clunky and kind of slow. And then by the time we're like through a couple of categories, they, they understand it. We do it by consensus kind of voting. It's pretty simple. You only have two, one, zero. So that gives you the background of how it scored. Here are the categories. Core capacity, special spaces. We take these results and match them with those diagrams. And it's, it, it's interesting how the perception is slightly different. But those are the qualitative. They're not telling you how many kids it, they may want 15 kids in a classroom because it does better. That's the qualitative. Technology, got to have data and communication. Actually, outside of Kennedy High School, it's pretty good. And, and, Mark, we do have the, the notes on these, if you'd like to see these.
What you just said was, these, these scores were created by staff. Who may or may not have anything to do with technology. They're just living in it.
But they use it.
Right, but infrastructure, they wouldn't necessarily know what the infrastructure behind what they're using.
They don't need to, but does it work for them? That's all about educational adequacy. Great question. No, we're not asking.
Up in the middle school ranks a little most.
Right. And that's why, like.
Those school teachers are happy.
Capacity specialty programs, 0.6.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we do, and that's one of the, well, back to your point, Mark. One of the things that we like is, when we're doing this, we make notes of what they're saying.
Yeah.
And those really are helpful answers to what you.
Well, and like you say, there, there is a perception that's creating this. That's not necessarily the case of the actual, actuals.
But this is the best, I mean, if I walked around and said it was adequate, what do I know? I'm not teaching in this space. I've seen a lot of schools, but so we just live with it. We think it's a pretty good metric for consideration.
Right.
So I absolutely, again, technology, supervision and security. This takes into account kind of what security, what access controls you have. Is your parking lot visible from the front of office? Do you have a lot of vegetation grown up around? The middle school, I do remember, middle school is low because it is a campus style. You've got a fence that secures the primary entrance, but there's some concerns about the gates. And then this is a perception thing. They, there's some teachers that want a fence out from the one of the, they want a perimeter fence that you can't see anybody out through window. That's, that's a scary thing that as opposed to, you can't get somebody, can't just come into the campus without going through the baby. But those are the kind of notes we have. We'll just, we'll share those with you as well. Let's just. Let's see, instructional aids, that's code for storage and display spaces for students and teachers, and then the furnishings themselves. Physical characteristics. Carpet, walls, what, how do they perceive the physical characteristics of the building? It scored pretty well at St. Mary's for good reason. The learning environment is heating, cooling, lighting. Those, the, the utilities is that providing the teachers the kind of atmosphere that they could be teaching in. And then relationship spaces is the last one, which is about how far is the cafeteria from the lunchroom? Is there, passing periods as a giant high school? How far do they have to go to catch the bus? These are all very soft metrics. But we think, what we did is we took the basic guidelines from the Oregon Department of Education, which had these, they created the categories, we created the questions based on our 60 years of K-12 design as to what are important, what make up good teaching. Contemporary learning. The 1.7 for St. Mary's, not real surprising. It's your new school, most contemporary way is design. High school, middle school, pretty low. It's hard to put any kind of assessment on these compared to other schools because it's teachers. But what it does, it does highlight some areas that you might consider focusing improvements, whether it's you know, what I don't have, let's use yours, the technology. What's going on in the middle, at the Kennedy? That's, that's the problem. Do you know what it is? The technology, what would, what would be concerning the teachers at the high school?
I think I remember, there was, there was dead zones, like the office was kind of a dead zone.
Oh. There's a question?
If anyone needs to ask Scott anything. Yeah, so there was some Wi-Fi dead zones. And then I know the one of the CTE classrooms, it wasn't really meant to be a classroom where that functioned. So what was missing, data ports and stuff that they need.
So the goal of all of this is baseline information and data. So we've touched on population, historic buildings, capacity. That's the data analysis and prioritization. We share this information with the committee and we ask them through multi-level voting to discuss and prioritize them based on what they've heard. And then conceptualizing a plan can be in anything. Paisley, it's a deferred maintenance. La Grande is replacing a historic building with a gymnasium. It does, it's not a set form of what it needs to look like. So the way, the process is what I'm going to show you next of how we got to a plan that is scheduled to be relayed back to the committee next year.
Do you, can we know who's on the long range facility plan? I know we've seen it. I'm sure we've seen a list of who the members are.
Okay, so do you?
Or does anybody have that? We don't need it right now.
Can you grab a microphone?
I'm drawing the mic up too, so I don't want to.
Ray Eater.
Ray, yeah.
Sean Aker.
Sean.
I think that's it. Oh, Scott was there.
In the beginning, there were four or five additional folks, so that they dropped off. Thank you.
Unfortunately, it happens. It's, it's a huge, okay, this is what I do. It's not a huge commitment for me, but this is really important work. We'll set them up same time every month, two hours, we promise we won't go over, so that we don't take a lot of their time, want their contribution, but inevitably it happens. People have other things. We're, hey, we all have a lot of. So I'm going to give you a summary of kind of what they did, what they saw. I, I've summarized the process because it's really so after they saw the data, this is the outline for getting them started on creating a plan. Building condition, condition assessed, repair, replace, I mean, additions been, this is, this is not generic, but it sure sounds like it. But it's their plan. So we put all the options on the table. Enrollment projections, okay. Not really an issue. Educational adequacy, here's some good information. What are your top priorities? We asked the question, why are they the top priorities? And how can you address those priorities with, with improvements at the school? So this was a meeting three, and the way we did it is we had, we got these comments, took their comments, recorded them all. And then had a report out and a brief prioritization. So we okay, so this is the group structure. We had two groups, about four each. What are your top priorities? Safety and security, potential student enrollment, retention, upgrade, repair, improve educational app. We gave them the choices of what addressing community means. These are almost paraphrasing the goals, by the way. But again, saying why and how. So this is the result. This is actually, we came back on meeting four saying, hey, this is what we heard you say. And the gold indicates common, in this case, that most votes with this gold line, which was to refresh interiors, paint, flooring, ceiling, and all there's in the building. interiors, paint, flooring, ceiling, and all there's in the buildings. Um, the next one were HVAC on all three schools. And they paid greed on these. Well, we're trying to help them do a spy. Where are you? What's your common ground? So they were in agreement on these three. Next up was addressing uh, the middle school. They wouldn't exactly match, who is pretty darn close. And then the last one was communities.
Yes. The Westerners said add air conditioning. And the Easterners said HVAC and boilers. So the Westerners did not think the boilers were.
So what this is. The Westerners and Easterners just where they were in the room. And I put their notes together saying, here's, I said, you're in agreement on these. Can you assume that you're on the grid? So it was not, there there was not a debate whether air conditioning was in, they were both saying that air conditioning at all three schools need to be upgraded. This one was saying HVAC, air conditioning, and then the boiler. So they didn't have boilers in there, but they weren't disagree.
That's a little concerning considering the boilers at all three schools. According to the data report that was presented. Need to be replaced, right?
I agree. I was trying to make, I was trying to give them common ground. Hey, look, you're both saying HVAC needs to be addressed, so we were trying to help in that regard.
Okay.
Now, if it, if they didn't agree with this, they could have said, this group could have said, well, we just want air conditioning. They had all of those. They didn't.
Okay, so the data plan, right, that assessment that you went through that presented beginning were those notes in collaboration with like Grant, the facilities person for the district that that kind of has a critical needs um, assessment for the facilities was was there a collaboration between what you found and and what Grant has on on his list of things? Okay.
Yeah, and, and I said, you know, the committee, we have let's say Easterners, say where's. You were on the Westerner tour, wasn't it? But it was represented there. So uh, yeah, yeah, for, yes, Grant was part of the of the tours and worked with mechanical engineer. We totally agree. And then once we got to the meetings, that was, Grant was part of that. Uh, but again, we're just trying to find common ground for that. We're trying to help them move the process.
Correct. Yeah, but it's just like, you know, like anybody knows what needs to be done at schools. It would be Grant, right? He's he's your expert for the schools. And so that collaboration process with that assessment data, you know, like if, for example, it says thirty percent of the middle school roof needs to be replaced. And we saw like a lot of the middle school on Thursday night, that roof was causing a lot of extra problems, right? Additional problems set roof. That's, I I was just wondering, you know, how big of a collaboration back and.
I am quite biased uh, towards mechanical system. Just because I'm in the room and the way I saw that committee, I mean, that's a community input forum and uh, I that's just what they came up with, you know, that's how the process went. Just had, we had different voices in the room.
I totally agree.
So. But but I think maybe what Andrea is asking as well is you were a part of the original assessment and collaboration with the original assessment. Is that, is that true? Kind of, to kind of like keep everybody on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't very formal or direct, or you know, we were sitting across the table, eating, but we walked around and.
But I hope we captured what you were saying, because boilers definitely are there.
They're some of the biggest ticket items on all.
Right, and that's what I saw. So when I didn't see the boilers on the other side, I was like, oh, I can is there a disconnect like in these two groups? Like one group says, yes, boilers, one group said.
But I think what, but what Rich is saying is, and what Grant is kind of confirming is the community members aren't necessarily taking every bit of that to heart and they're saying, okay, these things, but for the community, here's things that we want, right?
Right.
So that's, that's a massive result of this page right here. Where the technical side may have said one thing and that our community is saying something just a bit different.
And we actually, you know, back to why are they different? We were, we were advocating that those two are, they're all in one boat together. We can't just do air conditioning.
Yeah, the Westerners did not disagree that.
That's, that's fair.
I'm just trying to like understand, like, okay.
We just, I I rewrote their notes exactly for me.
And so it might not be, you know, a lot of people want HVAC air conditioning, like they're the same thing.
The one thing that I will have to reassure you is the most important person in the assessment is not us, it's what Grant is. I'm not, not asking you to take on more responsibility, but he knows the buildings better than anybody. We're doing, we did the assessments over a day and a half. So uh, anyway. What we're trying to do with this is find the common ground is so that we could get everybody. So this is not what we've presented. This is what we're scheduled to present to them the next meeting. This is not a plan. This is the results of what they said. This is another spreadsheet and I can move these around based on this note. So you can see one goes in that column, one here, two. And so we move these around. What they did say in the last round of voting is their number one priority was to refresh. Update to HVAC. Okay, that's their top two. Next with the middle school addition. The community, they want all of that. Then they want the uh, multi-use building. This is what this is where we start.
Why? Where's the why?
The why?
What's the why?
Okay. There's a, 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 an expressed desire to have one more facility so you can sponsor more competitions and games.
Specific to any sport, any.
Basketball, volleyball.
Gym use, any, any consideration of how much it takes to manage something like that and own building and the cost of adding spurs. You're already such thin resources of maintenance and all. Anyway, sorry, I'm ranting.
You should.
I'm just wondering how deep that conversation went and if there was much pushback on points. It is, it's not, it's, it's, it's many choice that surprised me when I heard that that was a good point.
So, and so I think what I might suggest is, we know that, this is why the meeting is so, this meeting is so good. They came up with a big list. It's Chris. Okay. The reality is we put, this is not everything, but this is, this is everything that is on their list. So if you take this one out. It's a big chart. So what I think, I I do think that this, you know, I don't know what you want to do with this, that there are some opportunities to kind of convey the message to the committee that, hey, thank you very much. We're seeing eye to eye. Thank you for identifying our greatest needs. Can you give us? That's what you need to do.
Yeah. And my question to you, Richard, is I agree with that statement. Don't see, like if you, Rachel provided the the package um, that they presented, right, that that first
Yeah.
first meeting, um, and June tenth that that was presented to them. If you look at the middle school slide. Okay, or even, even sort of St. Mary's, um, there's, you know, common grounds in a lot of these schools. Where it talks about, you know, the assessment summaries, like here's kind of what's needed and the roof issue on the middle school, like the envelope of the school is, I don't really see that in a, in a priority. And in the assessment summary, like let's take the middle school, for example, this is kind of to replace damage and stained ceiling tiles throughout, then you replace it. Something's causing these ceiling tiles to be stained, right? My assumption would be some type of water.
Yes, that's.
Whether that's through the pipes or through the roof, something's causing that. And so instead of replacing those tiles, you gotta probably dig a little deeper in, fix the plumbing perhaps, or the roof or.
Right, I would say though the ceiling tiles have been there since the building was built, so could have been past issues as well. But it's also a, if it's not on there, I would say, I mean, yes, you should repair the roof to try to before you go through and replace all of the ceiling tiles. So that's a further in-depth conversation later on, when you actually, and really replacing ceiling tiles is a very small.
That's right, but if the, if the cause is not fixed, right, you gotta, you know, and then the middle school addition. So this is just my personal opinion on this cafeteria issue. The cafeteria is the same size as it was when I was there. We had four grade levels when I was there. More students were there. The cafeteria wasn't the issue until COVID. Right. So I think the middle school addition in my opinion is not a high priority. Because the cafeteria is sufficient past COVID, far spacing goes. And when it says, you know, the band, new band room, the new band room was built. And it's the newest, like, one of the newest things is, correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, was it built the same time that that um,
Yeah, it was.
Was added, but they were added at the same time? Was the bathroom in the?
Yeah, when they added the back pod.
I believe. In nineties, I think.
Yeah.
So I would like kind of look, want to go back to the, to the planning committee and saying the middle school addition, I don't really think is a high priority as well, although when we gotta look in, you know, if our boilers go out. We have to pay for that, right then and there, or you know, something like our building envelope.
The original boiler, so it's what, what do we say, fifty-three years old? That's how old that boiler is.
So I think going back to um, the, the planning committee and saying, you know, we really need to look at what are our liabilities here and and kind of putting those as our priorities. And yeah, new gym would be great, right? A new gym would be great, but five million dollars right now. And like you said, the, the cost to maintain that building or to pay taxes on that much more square space or to heat. Right, like all those additional electricity, all those additional things.
I think they should be petitioning the city or a community building, not the school district.
And and I like your, your suggestion, Richard, of, you know, I think consensus is we, like, my question is, and I think Andy is on the middle school addition. Tell us a little bit more about the why, what, what, what analysis? How did you reach this? How did you have this recommendation?
So I want to give you some leeway here or or give you some reassurance that you can get to a place of common ground and an agreement.
Well, I think the top two probably.
So even going forward, what I want to, I want you to differentiate a plan from a bond.
Right, right, right. Well, and, and, and yet having a five million dollar additional gym in a long-range facility plan as a number one priority. I question that strongly. I don't know that I, I don't know that today personally I would adopt a long-range facility plan.
Okay. They, they need to know that. Sure, sure. Good, good. It would be better if you're all. And now we, and I think you can get there if, thank you, exactly everything you've talked about. I said I would show you how the budgeting works. You need to know that. It's kind of surprising.
Real life versus.
Yeah. Yeah, so um, this is a little example of how these, why these numbers sound so big to me. So this is, this is scripted by O D and I totally agree. Uh, the first thing is, let's take a, a project that's a million dollar construction budget. Okay, that's great. But it's going to inflate over the next thirty months, which is the description down there. O D E inflation rate is fourteen percent. And it goes, it varies every year. This year, there's probably going to go on. This was twenty twenty numbers, twenty twenty-one. They issue a new uh, spreadsheet every January fifth. Um, so first thing we're gonna do is take that million dollars inflated out into the future. Because you're not going to build it now. In fact, it's thirty months from now to the midpoint of construction. That's because if you say, go for it now, you're gonna pass bond later, how to do the planning, then you start to go. Everybody's not even great. So that means the project budget is one point one four million. But wait, there's more. Development costs. There are thirty, okay, so next one. Development costs are thirty-eight percent. You say, what's that? Design fees, high school hire, direct hire special. Commissioning is somebody who makes, comes in to make sure that the mechanical systems are operating properly. As systems get more sophisticated and complicated and software dependent, this is really important. I'm not so sure it's a good idea. But anyway, but they have an envelope consultant. Our climate really suggests that you, that you need to do get scientists involved in designing the exterior enclosure, because water can get in anywhere. Cost estimating, it's a third party who does cost estimating between, you know, contractor and the architects could say this, how much cost you need third. Organ solar requirement probably going to apply to you, uh, one half, one half percent of every construction project, I think, with your arrangement, kind of got covered. This was in place nine years ago and that's how you got by it. Permanent land use, everybody, everybody was here, remembers that. You have to go through the city and the city is just not.
They're so wonderful.
Yes, right. See this picture? I gotta jump in. See this? This is your school. This is the middle school. These are stormwater detention chambers under the ground. Because you couldn't dump your water, your stormwater directly in to the county system, Marion County system. Did you know those were out there? Look at the size of these things. Galleries, I was, stormwater galleries, okay. So that's this, this, the county gets to review it. The city was not a big problem, but the county was, was really problematic. So that's, they, they charged fees to do land use permitting if you were to do, now, if you do a renovation or do interior, this doesn't apply. Okay, but you can see this is applicable to everything. Survey boundary and topo. If you're going to do any addition, I know you're not advocating that, but gotta have that geotechnical investigation, what's the ground below it? Bond issuance costs, Piper Jaffe likes to get theirs, one percent. Bond program management, you had a gym cake up last time that did it, they, they charge a fee to administer the construction. Then furnishings, you have to buy furnishings. Oh, wait a minute. We're talking something about thirty months out. Fifteen percent contingency for a pie in the sky, thirty thousand foot elevation project is, is sensible. That's why your one point one four million dollar project comes to one and a half. It is good, sound planning. This keeps. This keeps you out of trouble. There are, there tends to be bond premiums, that's great, but the last thing you want to do is be at a point where you can't finish the project you have. Uh, you have a little bit of cushion if you do renovations, which is great. But this is good, sound planning. So that's what we, we shared that with them, explained that to them, so that's why. These numbers do include all that. So you can see the. The eight million dollars for the H V A C is probably closer to six to six point two million hard cost. So, um, but we gotta plan it this way, cause you're gonna hopefully use this to develop a, uh, a bond title. Uh, to do some of those repairs. And me, the committee. Took the information and came up with a plan of everything that wanted to go into phase one, see, it wasn't the priorities. It was just in phase one, they included. The community center and in addition to the middle school.
Do we, do, does anybody in the room know when our, um, the bond we passed, what was it, twenty thirteen? Twenty twelve, what, when does that, when do we stop paying on that?
Christie did look that up and we have. I think around nine more.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's twenty, it was twenty-year bond, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Uh, this, they've changed their name, yes, it's still Piper Jeffrey.
I'm sorry.
Is it Piper Jeffrey who's the bond? Okay, anyway, they will, it's, they will do it no cost, come out and show you, once you decide if you want to go for a bond, they'll come out and show you. How your, your bonding cost can be calculated over another twenty-year cycle.
Yeah.
So they take some of what you currently indebtedness and roll it into a bigger indebtedness and level it out, so that, you know, the, the best strategy, I am gonna. The best strategy is to keep it at the same rate. You guys pay more, okay, your committee will support schools, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we, yeah.
You should be proud of it.
So I, I, I give it your say, Chair, concerned, right, we, we have to learn things that need help, that we can't fund. Or budget. To then pile up such a bond on what we already pay. And the timing of bond with COVID and not receiving a family, how things were done. It would be really hard. To justify asking for a bond, so we figure out, like. The payoff.
I'm trying to keep it.
We'll need a whole lot of those stuff, yeah.
And, and the four million match?
Yes.
How likely is that, is that a slam dunk then deal, or what, what are we?
Great question, um, so, the long story short is, um. They have been funding all the projects that have passed, first you gotta apply. Submit a long-range facility plan that the state approves, that's why we created a facility match. Um, and then you need to pass a bond. But, so, those three things, all, they've been funding all the projects, they have nineteen million this, for this, uh, May election. Four million per, per, and some schools, districts don't ask for it all, so you're talking about, you know, uh, maybe five school districts. What, and just wait, just to kind of complete the idea of how the process works. Uh, July one, for a November election, the, the, for a May election that's passed, that was December one. Uh, we had two school districts submit, that's La Grande and Crookville. July one, you can submit for a November bond. Within fifteen days, you find out if you've qualified for the batch.
Oh.
And they, I, I've seen where they, they, they don't assume everybody will pass. So.
Which is a pretty safe assumption.
Yeah, the last thing is, and I've forgotten, it's based on need. And I forgot, I forgot your number.
It's pretty five, or, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good, it's a good number. Relative.
Yeah, almost one, one seventy-two.
Mark and Teresa, do you have reaction to the? To the list, I mean, you heard me and Andy.
I was in agreement. Yeah.
Now, the one thing though, on, on your list, and this is just a technical, you referred to it as a phase, but it says plan. It's just like different phases of like, uh, a long, right, the long-range planning? Or is this like, this is like, find number one, we're gonna go with this, or find number two, we're gonna go with this.
Right, so we can move it around, so, oh, you want.
This was just clarification, thanks.
No, no, and it develops a scenario, which one to go into these numbers, they, probably could say plan up there too.
It, it does say plan.
Okay. But okay. Okay. What it does for me is, is, as a spreadsheet, I could, I have all these numbers in there, and the committee could say, well, let's take that out, and I could just move it over. Doesn't go away, I don't have to resurrect, say.
I have a basic question, so, uh, all schools update H V A C, that's eight million, and then all schools add A C. An additional two million, so updating the H V A C, does it include A C?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It's just if they decide back to you.
Yeah.
They wanted to do that one.
And doing one takes care of the, the A C.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
This building has A C.
Except for the gym.
Except for the gym.
This. Really every building, except for the gym, cause it's so costly.
Yeah, that's pretty typical, cause.
There's A C in this gym. Seriously, cause I can remember coming down to watch games and sitting right under it, getting cold, they're blowing.
The old gym?
No, not, St. Mary's gym, was it during the winter? Basketball season, probably.
Winter, so that was probably the air from outside.
So we bring you the fresh air, but there's lots of people in there, it's called the colonizer. And it's still over the CO2 level.
All right. I thought it was great, but I don't know, just as a vent, and it's blowing cold air.
So, and this is probably too in the weeds, but I could ask it anyway, so if, um. Taking care of St. Mary's old gym. Made it to the list, would that be a function, could, would, could it be repaired and, and upgraded? To be able to accommodate any high school sports activity?
They did ask that, and it's, it's not a full-size gym.
It's too small, that's what I thought, so that's, that's where I was assuming, I just wanted to.
We might, we didn't discuss it, but you might be able to put an addition on it. You know, go, go to the north, that's, that would be the seating, but, you know, we didn't even investigate it, but then.
Yeah.
Many times that's more expensive than just.
Yeah, yeah. It's a. It's an old historical structure.
Yeah, it, it. So that's actually what, what Grant is doing, they're, it's a pre-engineered building. Cause they've got a gym in their annex, which is, uh, an old building that doesn't have A A access, needs an elevator. And it's, it's a lot of really scary space in the upper levels. So we have two deliverables, uh, all of them spreadsheets, I love spreadsheets, so. Will be, all the, uh, O D E spreadsheets that are Excel, and then the educational app, they have the annotation. Right inside, there are some notes on the spreadsheet, if you have any questions on those, of the O D E spreadsheets, please give us a call, uh. There is a narrative as well, which would help, I think we said the narrative. Uh, maybe not, no, we get, we give it some, so.
Is that for a building?
Yes.
So this is kind of like this. So now, now. In January, for the next. Um, meeting for the long range, but now it happens, we take our feedback to them, and then, like, where do we could kind of, what's the process?
Great, I asked the question on the next step, and it's, it's how do you want it, do you? Do you want superintendent to kind of say, hey, the board has looked at it, do you, one of the representatives for it, wanna go to the board and make a case for? What should be done, uh, for all the right reasons, uh, we certainly could do it, but it's not nearly as effective, it's the school district itself say it, thank you very much, but maybe. Whatever reason.
Well, and, and there's gonna be a long-range facility plan out of this process, and it would be nice if, if. If the majority of the priorities that are identified in the order that they identify. Sync and align with. What the board is thinking, and I trust that Rachel can represent. What she heard tonight in our discussion. For the committee to consider, and they will. They will create their priorities list based on what they believe to be the right one, and. The board will take action in the way that we believe is the right action to take. And maybe they'll be in sync and aligned well, and. Maybe not, and we'll just see how it plays out. Is that fair?
That's accurate.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right.
The, the, the way the process likes to go is for, uh, the plan, the longer it's absolutely planned to be wrapped up, and then. Committee member two, and I wouldn't suggest to. Come to make a presentation of, this is what we have, okay, this is what we'd like to. S- submit, and then it is at the discretion of the board to either accept or, uh, do something different. But I'm with you, I think it'd be great if you could do all that.
Be nice that we could be aligned.
Yeah, such that that meeting was.
And so I, I appreciate the action that y'all took to pause and let us.
Me too.
Let us hear about it and talk about it, yeah, so thank you for that.
Agreed, yeah.
So then the next meeting of the L R F P is, I saw on your slide, it said January fifth, but we had tentatively put in. I believe that the nineteenth.
Okay, fine, that was my mistake.
Which is after the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so, um. Pardon?
The nineteenth of December.
Uh, no.
No, January.
January, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, no, definitely not the nineteenth.
Yeah.
No. No, that one just flew right by.
Yes, I have just one mistake.
So, at that point, our, our, our thinking would be then, that there's, there's, I will be coming to the long-range facility planning. Meeting on the nineteenth with this feedback, and they, there would not be a recommendation brought forward until.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. That's right with everyone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sounds like good.
Yep.
Okay. And one, one more question for Rachel, and you could then ask Graham, or however it works in this setting, but. Do we have a life cycle costing, um, analysis plan for all of our facilities? I didn't think so, that takes an investment of.
So what you do is actually take the same information we have, and then identify. Everything, go through second by section and say, okay, carpet, what is its current condition, life cycle cost on carpet is about seven years. So then you interpolate from there, it can be done, it's much more com- uh, complex.
Intensive.
Intense, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, who, who does that part, like, who typically takes on that?
We can, but there's other companies that do it as well, there are companies that do nothing but that, so.
Does anybody have any more questions or comments?
Which, on, on the original assessment, were all those things, all the. Things are identified, were identified by their need for repair or replacement, or are they identified as just cause it's old?
Right, if it's old and it's in good condition, it's a good.
Okay.
Anything else? I, I'm adjourning. Well done, everyone.
Very much, and thank you for taking interest, I mean, I don't mean to sound livid at all, but it's really important that you are alive, this isn't what. School district wants to go, you need to.
Yeah.
It's like.
Agreed.
I think they're on your side too, so.
Abs- oh, absolutely.
We're very appreciative of your, both of your willingness to come down here this evening, thank you so much for your introduction and for being here.
Sorry, I didn't mean to jump spot.
Oh, don't worry.
Hi, Graham, thanks.
I didn't think it would happen, I wanted to tell.
There you go.
All those.
Thank you.
We'll follow up with you tomorrow.